Please join me in saying of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our flag is gone. Well, I guess we point north, right?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess we have to report a theft of a flag or something. Well, with our agenda, I just note that we have no recognitions, which is probably good news in the sense that we didn't have anybody nearly choke in our district in the last month, so. That's right, saved from choke. We very much appreciate those people and if it, hopefully, we don't have another string of months like we had, so. All right, we go directly to superintendent's report.
Good evening to everyone. So, talking about the election for school board, first on my list of topics, and we are very fortunate to have nine candidates who have submitted paperwork for school board for the three seats that are up for election in April. So with nine candidates, that means we will have a primary on February 17th, and the top six candidates with the top votes will move forward to the general election on April 7th. So certainly, we have some incumbents or some board members, Tom Holland and Brian Bell, who have chosen not to run again, and we thank them for their service, and I think we should recognize them at their last board meeting in April. So we'll hold that off for now and focus on our new candidates, but they have contributed much to our district in their role as school board members. So with that, Board Member Sandy Gurkey has chosen to run again for office, so thank you, along with eight of their new candidates. And so this morning, we drew for the order on the ballot on February 17th. So that's the order that I will talk about these candidates, and we have a couple of them here this evening, so when we get to them, I'd like them just to stand up and be recognized. So first on the ballot is Lowell C. Enerson, followed by Joe Westerbarth, then Butch Schultz, who I know is in the audience, so Butch, will you please stand? Thank you. And then Kristi L. Vitale, and I know Kristi is here as well, so please stand. Sue Katas, Sandy Gurkey, Pam Brokaw, Rob Brown, and Nicole J. Lotto. And I don't believe any of the rest of the candidates are here. Did I miss anybody? So with that, certainly, we thank each of these individuals who have chosen to be a candidate for the school board. We thank them for their interest in the Hudson School District and for their willingness to serve our students and the, serve our students and this community on the Board of Education. So there is a candidate forum being sponsored by parent groups, and that is scheduled just recently on January 29th at 7:00 at the Willow River Auditorium. So good luck to each of those candidates, and six of them again will move forward to the April 7th general election. With that, unless there are some questions, I'll move on to the next topic, and that is the Women in STEM Plus Open House that we have scheduled for students. It's February 12th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Hudson Middle School, and we invite students in grades K through 12, particularly female students and their families, to this STEM Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Open House. And this event will take place, as I said, on February 12th. Participating students will have the opportunity to explore the areas of science, technology, engineering, math, applied arts, and manufacturing. They will meet and talk with several female professions in those fields, and participate in hands-on activities in those careers, and meet and talk with several local representatives of Minnesota and Wisconsin universities and colleges. So this is our third year for the event. It's been very well received by our students and family. It's sponsored through Carl Perkins Grant Funds, and it's part of the learning goals that were established by the District STEM Advisory Council. And certainly, we want to encourage more females to have interest in STEM careers, and we have a STEM academy at the high school, starting at the sophomore level, so this is an opportunity for students to learn about some of those careers. Great opportunity. And then lastly, just want to announce a very important event for families who have students of kindergarten age, for kindergarten entering this fall for the 2015-16 school year. We have district-wide kindergarten registration on Tuesday, February 3rd, from 4:00 to 6:00 at Hudson Prairie Elementary, and that is, it doesn't make any difference which school your child would be attending, all of the students would go to Hudson Prairie to register. And certainly, we would also encourage parents to call the school of attendance, the resident school, so that they could get on the mailing list for that school, and they need to bring a birth certificate and proof of residency. So I will be reporting to the board the preliminary kindergarten numbers for the fall at the February board meeting. And that, I believe, is it for my report, unless there's some questions or comments.
I have a question, Mr. President. Mary, how are we going to communicate that change in registration to the community? I mean, I know it's different, they've previously registered at their school that they would be attending.
We have, I can't say how long, but we have done it in one place for a number of years, several years. There is another event where there is, it's in the spring, and then they go to their own, their home school. Good clarification.
Mary, just one comment. Just talking about STEM, especially females, just the latest stats. So I'm president of a software company in Minneapolis, we have about 120 software developers, and only 18%, even after active kind of engagement with trying to hire more females, only 18% of our workforce is female, and in engineering and software development, only 10%. And we literally cannot find females that, even though we actively kind of recruit, we cannot find enough females, especially in software developers.
So it's a great career path for females to pursue and look at employment after their education.
So on the 23rd of April, where actually, we have like Bring Your Young, we're trying to get young females in our school, so I'll probably bring my daughter, but it's just, it's a big issue. It's a big issue actually in Google and Apple and others. So I would say of all STEM, the biggest gap between STEM and jobs right now, one of the biggest ones is in computer science, so.
Those are great comments, and I hope they filter into our parents and to our girls as well, and certainly, the efforts that we're trying as a district to highlight these careers and the advantages in each of those careers.
And I know like the Hour of Code with coding.org, I know Senator, you've been involved with that, and I know they did that in our elementary school. All those things are really important, so, thanks.
Any other questions regarding the superintendent report? All right, hearing none, then we will move on to other reports, and I guess first up is our annual audit report, and I'll ask the folks from Clifton-Larson, is that who's coming up to discuss this?
Yes, right, yeah. We have Brock Guyen, who's the principal with Clifton-Larson, Allen, and Mark Cumlin from my office, who's involved quite a bit with the audit, and up to Doc, and so Brock will give a brief overview of the audit, and then answer any questions that you might have.
Yep. Yes, thanks for having me. I will plan on going through things pretty quickly. We did meet with the finance committee last week and went over everything in great detail, so I'm just going to hit some of the high points today. And even before I get started, though, I just want to point out, too, that we do get, we get into the district there, and we ask a lot of questions, and we talk to a lot of people, so we're absorbing some time there, and we want to point out that we did find the records, we're in good order, and everyone was very responsive to our questions, so really appreciate that of your staff. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to stick to the financial statement itself, everything we have, that we want to talk about tonight is going to be in there. I'm not going to go through it in, you know, everything, obviously, but I'll try to point it out. I understand you have copies, is that true?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll point out page numbers, excuse me, probably only critical if you're following along in a couple parts here, but I'll just start quickly with a comment on the, excuse me, auditor's report, which is on pages one through three. The real important part there is that we issue an opinion on this document itself, and we have issued what's called an unmodified opinion. A lot of people refer to it as a clean opinion, it's the highest level of opinion you can receive, so that's good news. If there's problems associated, we'd have to modify it and add some more wording, but you've received a clean opinion on your audited financial statements. We do issue two additional reports, and they're in the way back, and I will jump there, so if you're following along and you want to go to page 62, it's almost, almost the last, one of the last pages. We issue, excuse me, a report on your internal control. So in addition to looking at the numbers and disclosures, we're taking a look at the systems in place over like receipts and dispersments, and we have, we report on that. And we do have one item that we're, that's a continuation of prior years, and that's here on page 62. And what this item says basically is that we, as external auditors, draft your financial statement. Now, standards say, and it makes sense, we can't be part of the district's control procedures, right? So that's why if we do this, it, that's why it's in the letter, it's very common. Twenty-nine of the third districts we work with receive the same thing. We have two former auditors on staff on one of our districts, and they actually enjoy cranking one out themselves. It is allowable, I'll put it that way, you know, just because it's in here doesn't mean it's not allowable, it is. It's just if it's the fact that we drafted, it's in there, and that's why it's there. So it's not a red flag, hopefully, it's just informational. So that was the only thing on there. I should point out, too, that, excuse me, the district does avoid two other very, very common findings, which we report in almost all of our clients, whether it's a school district or county or whatever. That would be lack of segregation of duties, or we come in and we propose journal entries. You do not have either one of those issues here, so that's actually a very good sign, so much cleaner report than most of our clients. The third and final report we issue is on, there's an item on page 64, and the last thing we look at is your compliance. So we're looking at your grants, contracts, things like that. And if things pop up, generally, yes or no kind of questions in our testing, and they become findings, they're reported here. This is the first time I understand it's been reported at your district. Basically, there's two staff that were claimed for special ed by the district that didn't have a valid license, and when that happens, this is kind of drives aid in the subsequent year, so it's important that we get this correct. So again, for whatever reason, this year, there was a rash of these. The DPI did have a little system change in regards to this, and I think that maybe had something to do with it, but there's probably about a dozen districts that we ran into this year that had the same problem. Something to monitor here in 2015, and hopefully, it won't be an issue going in for your '15 audit. Excuse me. Any questions on the reports before I touch on some financial highlights? If not, I'll move you back towards the middle, towards page, to page 44. So on page 44, excuse me, we talk about your Fund 10, or your general fund, okay? So, not to confuse things too much, but if you look forward in this document a little bit further, accounting standards require us to combine Funds 10 and 27. So, oh, thank you very much, to avoid that, or to provide you the information so you can look at just your general fund, so how you budget and whatnot, we look at page 44 here, and here's your results for the year. And you've got a number of columns, I'm not going to look at all the details here, but you do have some budgeted information, some actual right in the middle, and then a prior year for comparison. If you go all the way to the bottom, I'll just point you into the third to last row, and that's your change in net fund balance, your net income or loss for the year, and you'll see a $2,731,000. So you had positive results in your Fund 10 for the year of $2.7 million, so that added to your fund balance. The very last number there, $21,987, is your fund balance or your reserves of the district at the end of the year. Now, that's the number I want to be able to measure as far as the financial health for the district, and you do have to break it down a little bit. So if you move back just slightly further, and you go to page 34, that gives us the information we need to tell exactly how healthy the district is.
And while you're taking your drink, that balance, fund balance that you just mentioned, that happens to be all assigned and unassigned funds?
That's everything, yep, that's exactly right, that's in total. So we're going to, when we go to page 34 here, we'll put it, we'll take that number, and we'll split it up, and we'll put it in different buckets, okay, because it's important to note that. For instance, right off the bat, there's $130,000 that's already spent, okay? That's their prepaid items you purchased in 2014 that'll be used in 2015. So you take that out right off the top, it's not available to you, so it's not really a reserve. The next two are committed. So you, as a board, at some point during the year, had discussion and made decisions to set aside dollars for these purposes, the first one being self-insurance. So you're building a reserve for your self-insurance program, for health and dental, and I know you've had some discussions on that, and the number set aside at the end of '14 was $1,950,000, sorry. The second item is capital expansion, or buildings, improvements in construction, and that's grown to $5 million that you've been able to set aside, so we take those off the top as well. So we're taking number, funds, resources, and we're, you know, you've earmarked them for particular purposes, and we're taking that off the top. So what's left is your true reserve, your unassigned fund balance of $14,906,000. So what we can do is we can then benchmark that against other districts, against prior years for you, and see how you're doing. You do have a policy of that number being 25 to 30% of general fund, the general fund budget, okay, and that's a minimum. You want to make sure, that's not necessarily a target, but that's your minimum that you want, so if you take that number and you compare it to total expenditures, thank you, that's how you come up with that percentage. The actual results, so if you calculate it out, the actual results, you're at 32.5%. So you're just slightly over that minimum threshold you've established. Now, you should note that Fund 27, right, has a zero fund balance at year-end, and general fund makes a transfer over, so you, most people want to include that as expenditures, okay, because those are planned dispersments out of Fund 10, so if you roll that number in, the amount that you transferred over to Fund 27, your percent goes down to 28.7%, all right? So you can look at it a couple different ways. That's right within your policy, and when we, our rule of thumb, when we look at school districts, is 25 to 30% is a minimum, right? So you're right in there, and that's essentially equivalent to, and that's probably how your policy was developed, it's between three and four months' worth of reserves, makes sense in a lot of cases. Of the 30 districts I mentioned that we work with, the average is 26.3, okay? So you're pretty much right in line with that as well. So all that being said, in our opinion, your unassigned fund balance is in pretty good shape at year-end. Just to wrap up, then, we do list out your other funds here, and real quickly, your debt service fund, that has maintained this level for a number of years now, and there's some reserves that requirements that are in place there. All debt service payments were met for the year, so that's good news. Working on down, you do have some special revenue funds. Your education trust and your food service funds are pretty close to where they were at the end of last year, basically break even. Your community service education fund, that one did have a decrease, and I believe there's a planned or a budgeted decrease in this month, so it decreased about $113,000 over the prior year, but still in good financial health. So with that, again, just to conclude, I think, hopefully, I pointed out the financial results, the results of your audits, the reports we issued, all very positive, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions for our auditor. I know that there was quite a few at the finance committee, but, and I think you summed them up at the beginning, everything is basically looking good, including our bond rating and, I know going forward, that's also dependent on audited reports and so forth.
Yes, that's a very good point, too, and they'll look at that unassigned number as a percentage of your expenditures, so if you can keep that strong, that'll help your bond rating.
It probably varies by government. You gave us more of an apples-to-apples comparison with other school districts, but I know, for instance, St. Craig County, I think theirs is somewhere between 35 and 40%, but counties may be a little bit different.
They are, yep. The average on counties is in the 40s, so, higher than schools, largely because of funding and availability of, and timing of funds.
Yes, Mary.
I would like to recognize Financial Services Director Tim Erickson and Mark Cumlin for their leadership for the financial health of our district, for the, how good we perform on this audit, and certainly, the management of our finances is done at an outstanding level, and I really thank them for all their work and leadership in this area.
All right. Thank you, Tim and Mark, and I guess I had one other question noting on page 33, as far as long-term obligations, our debt limit and margin of indebtedness. That looks also like something that's in very good shape. I think that also reflects on the bond rating as well.
Yes, that's a good observation, and you do have plenty of room in there as far as your debt limit goes, to take on additional debt if need be.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay. With that, thank you very much for your report.
Yes. I just want to thank the rest of my office staff, too, as well as Mark, they do a great job. Very much appreciated.
Thanks, Tim. Sorry, Lynn, I know finance is your committee, I should have let you introduce these guys, but, so now, the next one is on the agenda for the reports, is the January 8th Board Work Session, which was held right here at Rivercrest less than a week ago, it was Thursday night. So this meeting was dedicated to beginning the community engagement process, and, if my computer would cooperate here, all right. I guess, first of all, the board's already aware, but because we've had the interviews and, that we retained consultant Ann Carroll on community engagement. She's been involved, this is what she does for a living, she's been involved in many projects, not just school-related projects, but she led our work session then last Thursday and helped us to develop our goals, objectives, you know, parameters and so forth, so I think maybe Bruce, you know, will want to help me, we can just kind of go through these, but first, we start with, what do we hope to achieve in this community engagement process? We've got some preliminary community engagement objectives, again, these can be added to, but these are a start. Number one, trust and transparency. We want to design and implement a trustworthy and transparent process. Number two, inclusion. We want to engage the full range of stakeholders in the Hudson School District community. And number three, consensus. We want to reach community consensus on the data, the needs, the options, and decisions about our future of education for the next generation of students here in Hudson. And again, Ann was very careful to point out that consensus does not mean unanimity. If our goal is to have 100% agreement on everything, we're going to fail, but trying to reach consensus on these various options is what our preliminary objective and goal is. Bruce, do you have anything to add to those?
No, I mean, I think the process started out good. The first one is the most critical piece, obviously, is just establishing that trust and transparency, and, you know, getting some additional folks engaged from the community to make sure that the process is followed, not necessarily concerned from a content perspective, but being very focused on ensuring that the process here takes us through these steps to, you know, ensure that we start out with that trust and transparency with the community engagement, so I think that's probably one of the bigger points.
Right. Should be pointing out that in any community engagement process, there's lots of different tools that can be used. In the last, our last go-around, we used World Cafes and public presentations. This is going to be a different approach, and it is certainly kind of starting over and getting the public involved right away, and just even how we design this process, and before we even get to the implementation stage. So one of the things that we spent a fair amount of time with on Thursday night was the community engagement values, and because that whole process needs to be conducted according to the core values, and there's an organization which is, you know, has, Ann Carroll has been trained in and uses quite a bit, and that's by the International Association for Public Participation. The short version is IAP2.org. Now, these core values are going to be included in the community engagement design and implementation of that plan, and those are as follows. Number one, public participation is based on the belief that those who are affected by a decision have a right to be involved in the decision-making process. Number two, public participation includes the promise that the public's contribution will influence the decision. Number three, public participation promotes sustainable decisions by recognizing and communicating the needs and interests of all participants, including decision-makers. Number four, public participation seeks out and facilitates the involvement of those potentially affected by or interested in a decision. Number five, public participation seeks input from participants in designing how they participate. Number six, public participation provides participants, say that one real fast, a lot of alliteration there, but, public participation provides participants with the information they need to participate in a meaningful way. And number seven, public participation communicates to participants how their input affected the decision. There was more discussion, but again, unanimous commitment to these core values, and Bruce, do you have any more comments on that?
Well, many of them just tie back to the three main values that we have, you know, so I think from, from the values that we're driving for here, you know, looking to make sure that the public is fully engaged through the entire process, and ensuring that we're getting all of the stakeholders engaged in this process, and not just certain groups, but ensuring that we're reaching out to a variety of different, whether it's members, individuals, groups, or the like, it's, everyone needs to get engaged and get their input as part of this process.
Okay. And then the next slide, I think, is the, directly from the IAP2 website, which is kind of a spectrum of our, you know, promise, if you will, as to how we're going to, the level of the public impact, anyway. And on that slide, it kind of goes from left to right with the increasing level of public impact. And what we selected as a board was to go directly to the involve, that is, work directly with the public throughout the process to ensure that the public concerns and aspirations are consistently understood and considered. And then, this means that our promise as a board to the public is that we will work with you to ensure that your concerns and aspirations are directly reflected in the alternatives developed, and provide feedback on how public input influenced the decision. Probably the last time, we were somewhere between inform and consult, so we were a little bit more to the left. Our goal is to get as far to the right as we practically can, and we think the most important thing Ann emphasized, too, was not to overpromise. And I think with this commitment, something new that this district has not engaged in, I think that the involve portion on the, on the spectrum is a promise that we should be able to fulfill.
It's a bit of an eye chart for those in the audience, or for those watching at home, but, you know, the other point about this particular chart is that you can't, you know, go back left, you know, once you start at a certain level, in our case, I think everyone was very committed to, you know, the involved perspective, moving further to the right- Moving further to the right isn't, in a collaborative way as much as we can would be an ideal scenario, but, you know, it goes back to the beginning in establishing that trust and transparency in the beginning to ensure that everyone feels as though that their involvement and their voices being heard through the process. So, you know, starting at that level, you know, is our commitment, and I think it's something as a board we need to be very focused on, that second row there, which is the promise to the public. So, you know, lock that one down, make sure that we're very well aware of it, and, you know, if you fall away from this, make sure that you go back and review it and stick to this as a board, and so it needs to be our commitment, so.
All right. Then next, we kind of covered some preliminary engagement parameters. Again, nothing here set in stone because the process is more of a, I guess, a living, breathing, something that would be subject to change if something's not working, but we have a very rough outline. What we would like to do is, once the plan has been designed, come forward on February tenth, which is our next regular board meeting, and present for adoption that process. This first stage, then, would be a baseline, it's kind of to lay the groundwork for the process and provide information to the community. That would be approximately a one-month period, we think, from mid-February to mid-March. The second stage is to then present initial community findings and begin articulating the community-defined needs and priorities for educating, again, our students and the next generation, and that would go from mid-March through mid-April, we think. The third stage is developing and presenting and gathering feedback on options to meet community-defined needs and align priorities. That one could be probably longer than establishing the needs or developing the baseline, so that's why we've allotted approximately six weeks, and if it ends up taking eight, then it's going to take eight. And then finally, is stage four, which would be decisions, and again, this is elaborating on the leading options to develop more comprehensive alternatives that meet the needs and align with the priorities that are developed, you know, from this public participation process, and gathering the stakeholder feedback, reaching consensus, and preparing a community-based recommendations, and then vet and offer for the board's consideration. And this will be, again, elaborating on the leading options, not necessarily coming up with one single option, but developing those comprehensively, and we're expecting and hoping that this could be done through June. We know that, once we get into summer, but if it ends up going into summer, then so be it. But this is a rough outline to get us with some expectations, hopefully, of what we'll have and be able to have on our timeline. Now, to that, you know, to develop this process and design it, we have a committee that was appointed at that work session on Thursday night. It's called the Community Process Stewards Committee, so PSC for short, Process Stewart Committee, which is made up primarily of members of the public. We appointed four, I guess my list is not here, but I'm going to go off of memory, Jill Burchill, Joel Skinner, Tom Van Pelt, and Paul Borget. And those are the four members from the community, and then we have two representatives from administration. That would be Tracy Habish-Aline is kind of a communications person, somebody who's trained in this IAP2 process, and Dave Grambo. So we would be looking to the administration, provide information of, you know, maybe answer questions that the process, that may come up during the process and so forth. And then representing the board would be Bruce and I. Bruce do not serve on any committees together, but then this, these meetings that of the PSC will be open to the public, they will be noticed, and anyone is welcome to observe. And once we design the plan, bring it forward in February, and then the PSC continues to monitor then the process as they continue to collect information regarding content, they will be reporting to the Facilities and Grounds Committee, which consists of Sandy Gurkey, Tom Holland, and myself, and then to the full board as needed. Ms. Carroll, Ann Carroll, our consultant, will oversee the process certainly through and into implementation, but at some point, the hope is that, you know, the public members of the committee will be able to implement it on their own, but Ms. Carroll will be a resource who will be available as needed. All right. Is there any questions, then, on that process or comments?
Mr. President, my recollection of speaking with Ms. Carroll, I think that was her last name, was that this becomes a small group at the beginning to basically put the design of the process together, but once implementation takes place, there's a broad network, many neighborhood meetings, that type of thing. I just want to try to describe for the community the understanding that the intention here is to activate and engage many, many in the community, but it's more the implementation stage. Is, am I correct in that?
That's right, yeah. Basically, the mode we're in now is developing the plan for the plan and, you know, just designing things, and that's what Ann has done in lots of different settings. Starts with a small group of people, and then, once the process is in place, you're right, then we switch over to content and implementation, and that's where more people, perhaps subcommittees, whatever other tools are going to be established by the plan.
And just to follow up, once we reach that stage of broad implementation, strategically, I believe we're thinking about trying to get the stakeholders, the representative stakeholders involved in that involvement broadly as well.
That is correct.
So, yeah.
Like I said, there will be reports periodically and regularly with Facilities and Grounds and periodically through with the board. Any other questions or comments on that? Carrie?
Mr. President?
Yes?
I want to point out also that she pointed out that night that this initial group is just to get the plan, the implementation plan in place, and doesn't have a particular objective or end in mind that they'll be driving, that it's just to involve the community.
That's right, yeah. That is, the sole purpose right now is to develop the process to involve the public. It is not to talk about needs, it is not to talk about options or solutions to any problems. It's just setting up the process to allow as wide range of public involvement through and develop that trust and transparency.
Mr. President?
Yes?
That meeting was taped, it is available, it should be out there to be viewed, I would presume.
That's right.
So that was on the eighth, and it was probably, what, an hour, fifteen minutes, hour and a half, something like that?
Yep.
So it's not, you know, a terribly long video if someone were to go out and check it out.
Correct. Any other questions, then, about the community engagement process? I know, for some, this may be taking more time than what they were anticipating, but we want to make sure that we do this right, and it's completely transparent, like I said, these are public meetings that anyone can come and observe, so. All right. We'll move on, then, to the next report, which is on Secondary Space for Learning, Continuation of the Short-Term Plan for Hudson Middle School. I guess my name is next to that because I subbed for Brian on the learning and program development, but, or I guess maybe that was on Facilities and Grounds. I guess I attended all four committee meetings, so keeping that straight from last week. But anyway, I guess I'm going to just turn it over to Dave because, really, it's more of a continuation. This is nothing new, this is part of, what, three now? Four year, we're in our fourth year of this plan to address overcrowding in the middle school.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, as you said, this is a plan that was implemented beginning in the 2012-2013 school year, and is part of a comprehensive, if you can say comprehensive, to a short-term plan, that includes a plan for the high school as well, but we'll just be reporting on the middle school plan tonight. And you also pointed out that it's a continuation of a plan, and we'll, as we get into this, I'll point out where that, how that has evolved. First thing to know is the primary component or element of this plan that makes it work is the shared use of Hudson Prairie Elementary, which is adjacent and connected to Hudson Middle School. And it's through the sharing of the space at Hudson Prairie Elementary that allows for the short-term relief at the middle school. And it also, another key component to this plan is the fact that we've had to cap enrollment at kindergarten at Hudson Prairie to the number of kids that would fill three sections and no more than three sections. That doesn't mean that those students would not still be Hudson resident Hudson School District students, it would just mean that, once they moved beyond that number in enrollment, they would, those students would then attend a different neighborhood elementary school. And as that rolls through by the year, by the 2017-2018 school year, by capping kindergarten at three sections and having that roll through by the 2017-18 school year, Hudson Prairie would essentially be serving as a three-section school throughout, which allows that space for the middle school to have access. And it's also important to understand that this plan is, it is evolving, it does change, but we are very solid where we sit right now. This plan was created primarily collaboratively with Principal Dan Coke from the middle school and Principal Susie Prather from Hudson Prairie Elementary. They both happen to be here tonight, so that worked out well. And they've worked exceptionally hard to make sure that this plan is successful, that the impact on students is minimized, and that it works well from beginning to end. And they have established some priorities in this plan, and if you scroll down a little bit, we can get those priorities on the screen. The first priority is keeping middle school students separate from elementary students, so the plan is designed in such a way that the students aren't intermingled, that the middle school students have their own section of the school, and the timing is such that there's very little contact between the middle school students and the elementary students. That goes even to separate bathroom facilities and so forth. Another key component or priority in the plan is keeping the elementary grade-level teams in the same sections or pods. Hudson Prairie was a very well-designed and built school, and one of the key features is the pods or the common areas that grade-level teams have. They have a common section and then classes that are right in the same vicinity. It's important in this plan that that isn't broken up, so the plan is designed accordingly. Another key element of the plan is minimizing the movement of teachers from one year to the next, so it's not a complete upset of the system each year. Instead, it's planned out consecutively, year after year, to make sure that the movement is minimized. And it's also important to consider the entire scope of K-5 programming, meaning that important elements of a K-5 elementary program aren't impacted negatively, like, as an example, we're going to take over an art room and no longer be able to offer art classes, that is definitely not part of that plan. And then another piece, which sounds like it's not a big deal, but it really is, is maintaining adequate storage and making sure that we're not filling hallways with boxes and bins, so that's part of the plan, and they've done a great job creating that plan. Currently, our current reality is that we have three health classes from the middle school that occupy classrooms at Hudson Prairie Elementary all through the day. That's one of the biggest chunks of this plan. Another room is used for orchestra lessons throughout the day. There are two physical education classes that take place in the Hudson Prairie Gymnasium, and Hudson Prairie, or the, I'm sorry, middle school students start earlier than elementary students, that allows that to take place before the elementary programming begins. And then the space is also used for after-school sports, and that is, it's a big element of the overall Hudson Middle School programming. So that's the primary elements of that plan. The way the plan is designed, it's completely sufficient and ready to roll throughout the 2015-16 school year. The purpose of this report really was to inform you of the needs for next year. The plan is in place and will be rolled out and without need for modification. However, it's important to understand that in the 2016-17 school year, some modifications would need to be made or some additional support rather to this plan, and that would be in some of the configurations of classroom space, some storage accommodations and so forth, but we'll get to that next year as we report on the 2016-17 needs at the Hudson Middle School for the short-term plan. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Tom?
Dave, I appreciate the explanation, and just, you know, we're titling this short-term, and with the title "short-term" implies not what we want, not what we want long-term. So can you kind of, can you help describe, or anybody can describe, what are the drawbacks, you know, to this in terms of it being, not being a long-term plan?
Certainly. Well, first of all, Hudson Prairie is designed to be a four-section school. That's how the building was designed, and as you know, we've had conversations about the high school, what happens when you start to patch things together to meet the needs year after year, you end up with a less-than-ideal situation. Fortunately, this plan minimizes that impact, but there still is an impact. When you have middle school students that have to walk across the school through a corridor and do a separate section, that minimizes the ability to collaborate between teachers, and that is a risk. Principal Coke has gone to great lengths to maintain the middle school concept and make sure that that philosophy is not affected. At this point, it's not affected to the point that it's eroded irreversibly, but I would definitely say we're on the cusp. If we have to start moving classes other than health out of that, out of the Hudson Middle School, I would say that would represent a significant erosion of the house concept. And then finally, I think, just the overall structure of mixing students between two schools, it minimizes flexibility in both settings. Both facilities are used at, utilized at incredibly high rates of efficiency, which doesn't allow for flexibility in the future.
Just to follow up to that, I appreciate that. Do you see any drawbacks to having neighborhood kids who would typically go to this school being put into a different school? Is there any drawback to that that you see?
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. So the capping process of limiting the number of students at Hudson Prairie Elementary does, that has a direct impact in that those students that would not be able to attend Hudson Prairie, again, would likely have to get on a bus, attend a school where their neighbors and neighbors and friends aren't attending. That does, that does present a sort of a variance from our philosophy of keeping our neighborhood schools intact.
Mr. President?
Lynn?
So, just by way of example, or I'm just trying to understand how it'd work, if there was a family that wanted to move into the Hudson Prairie attendance area, and the family that they were buying the house from was moving out, would they be allowed to attend, or would, if the grade is capped, or how would that function practically?
That would, yeah, that would depend on the enrollment at that grade level, and there, so that specific scenario is specific to a family moving in. An example, now, an example that would be a little bit different is if a student or a family has an incoming kindergartner, but they also have, say, a third-grade sibling. That student, then, would not attend a different school, so there is a process that allows for sort of the preferences to be determined in that determination, but yes, if that grade level were capped, if kindergarten were capped, and it's a new family, then they would attend a different elementary school.
So that's similar to how the state looks at sibling preference for open enrollment purposes?
So there is a priority system in place for determining which students have to go to a different school than, other than what they?
Yes, yes, there is. Prior to Rivercrest being built, we had significant space issues at the elementary level, and we had a capping process that was in place, not just at one school, at several schools, and we had many situations where students were not attending their neighborhood schools. Through that, we learned how to minimize the impact, but not eliminate it.
And so, I was just curious, with, basically, each year since this plan was first adopted in 2012, or implemented, I should say, in 2012, basically, they've lost a classroom at Hudson Prairie, correct?
Yeah, it's not, it's not one-for-one, not each year, but the plan allows for that, and that's, again, dependent on enrollment, if that needs to be implemented or not.
Okay. But does that reflect back, then, on capacity? Is our, I mean, as we use more of Hudson Prairie, is that reducing our capacity and...
Yeah, absolutely, but again, when Rivercrest came online, we no longer had an immediate space need at the elementary level, so that allowed for that flexibility, but you can only go so far before you lose that flexibility, both at... But you can only go so far before you lose that flexibility both at Hudson Prairie Elementary and Hudson Middle School. Quite honestly, the plan, it's listed at 2017 and 18, 2017, 18 and beyond. The, the beyond is not something that I would think would be in the best interest of our students.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments then regarding the short-term plan at the middle school? All right, with that, we go to the next report, which is Lynn talking about the upcoming school board convention and delegate assembly resolutions.
Thank you. Board members, at your places, you should have a packet that contains the proposed resolutions. I'm not, we're not going to go through them now and we're not going to review them now, but-
Oh, come on, let's go through them one at a time.
Okay, we're going to be here till 10:00 then, everybody. So if you can look through them and see if you have any comments or questions, the meeting will be held on January 21st. And I would like your comments or feedback by the 20th. Jamie and I, as well as some of the administration, will be attending the convention.
You look forward to some lively debate once you get down there. Some of the resolutions are interesting, but I wouldn't say all of them are. But anyway, so, any board members, please get your comments to Lynn before, what, Tuesday?
Yes.
All right, good. Then we're up to citizens' requests to speak. We have no one here to speak, all right? So that would also mean that no, no comments from board members in response. And we go to topics for action. Number one, we have a retirement. I'll turn it over to Mary.
So, towards the end of last week, I received a letter from Hudson Middle School Principal Dan Koch about his intent to retire at the end of June. And certainly, I received that, that was bittersweet. I wish him the very best in retirement as he moves to the next stage and next chapter in his life. But also, it's hard to think of a school year without Dan at the helm when I think of the coming school year. So Dan, would you come forward, please? I have some comments to talk about his career and his contributions in, to the Hudson School District. So Dan started, and you'll let me know if I miss something here or misspeak, but he started his educational career in Iowa. He taught high school American history and American Lit. And he coached varsity boys' basketball and he took two teams to the state tournament. So wonderful accomplishment. He also coached football. He was the varsity offensive coordinator. And I think that might be one of the reasons that we often see him at Raider football and basketball games. He is a regular in attendance there. He was also a high school associate principal in two districts in Iowa. And then he moved to the great state of Wisconsin. So, smart move, Dan. He moved as the middle school principal in Holman. And fortunately for us, he didn't stay in Holman. And in 1995, came to Hudson Middle School as the principal, where he's been for the last 20 years. He has an exemplary career and it is, spans 42 years of service to youth and their education. Dan told me that when he came to Hudson Middle School, there were about 600 students there. So over his tenure, that student body has more than doubled in size and, and Dave Grambo has just talked about our continuing short-term plan to deal with space issues at Hudson Middle School. And it is the largest middle school and continues to be that in the state of Wisconsin under his leadership. Dan started at the high school level, but for me, it's obvious that his work in Hudson, he has a middle school heart. And he protects and certainly articulates the vision of Hudson Middle School. Dave talked about that as well. And certainly is an ardent advocate for the middle school philosophy, the house structure at Hudson Middle School that students, parents, families and teachers strongly support and appreciate. He's dedicated to the education and development of the whole child, those middle school learners, very special in their time of development. He's developed a culture for learning that includes students setting their own goals and achieving at higher levels. And under his leadership at Hudson Middle School, he was, the school was honored twice by the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators as the Wisconsin Middle School of Excellence, both in 2010 and 2012. And in recognition of his leadership of the school, he was honored as the 2012 Wisconsin Middle School Principal of the Year by the same organization. And, you know, talking to Dan, that's quite an accomplishment and it's such an honor. But I think even more dear to him is that he was nominated by Hudson Middle School staff. He traveled to Washington DC and met with other state middle school principals and leaders. And I know that, that was an important event for him that he thoroughly enjoyed. Dan has contributed also at the district level as a valued member of the administrative leadership team. He's led and served on numerous district committees. And one of the examples that you all know about that has had a huge impact on where we are as a district and where we're going in the future is he served on the development of the district strategic vision, HSD 2025. He has had a tremendous impact on Hudson Middle School. And it's amazing to think of how many students and educators he has touched and coached and influenced in his 20 years there and in his 42 years in the profession. He's hired and coached a middle school team of talented educators who will continue his legacy far into the future. In fact, he told me that of his faculty, he has hired all but six. Isn't that amazing? So he definitely will be missed. And after Dan has the opportunity to say a few words, I recommend that you accept his retirement with much gratitude for the 20 years of leadership and service to Hudson Middle School students, staff, families and to the district. Dan?
Thank you. I'm not sure exactly what I should say, although most of you know I'm seldom at a loss for words when it comes to many of these things. But I think sort of in a nutshell, I would say that I'm not sure anyone should be allowed to have as much fun as I've had for 42 years. This is, I've never had a moment of regret with respect to the profession that I chose and that I labored in for so long, enjoyed, the people that I met, the people I worked with. Over the years, I've served in five school districts and I, you know, happily can say, standing in front of you right here, that, you know, of the five, I felt that Hudson is, I think categorically, the best district that I've had the opportunity to work in. Times change, things evolve, you know, began back in 1972. And it certainly is not the same today as it was, you know, back then for a lot of reasons. It's just the nature of the way things evolve. But when I came here, when I interviewed here, I was struck by the fact that when I took a building tour and the building had only been up for one year, it was designed to be a middle school, a true middle school. And that struck me at that point in time. Hopefully, if I got the job, I would be working in a community that had the foresight to recognize that, you know, the transescent, the 10-to-14-year-old needed a particularly unique environment and structure in which to be educated. And the community obviously had seen that, designed it and voted for it in support of its youth. And I believe that building now for 21 or two years has served the community and its students, the kids, very, very well. And I think the community is to be commended for that. I would say, it's not a paid advertisement, but we're on a threshold of making more important decisions about the future of our youth. And hopefully, this board and future boards will make the right call and make the right decision to, to serve the kids. I've served here at Hudson for 20 years through several different versions of school boards and a number of different administrators, but there's always been a consistent theme and that's always been to keep kids at the center of the decision-making and to make the right decisions on behalf of kids and try to lay down a, a platform from which, you know, kids can, can grow, they can emerge, they can develop and be better prepared to face, you know, their futures. That's been a consistent thing that I've seen through all of the boards that have been here and the administrative leaders that have been here as well. The last thing I think I would say is that, and Mary did allude to it, I'm terribly proud of the people who work in my building. I get a little, I get a little emotional when I think about them, since I've hired many of them. And I think the fact that I believe so deeply in developing teacher leaders. I noticed on your chart when you were talking about moving in the direction of empowerment, that's the direction that I've always gone in my building, to collaborate, develop teams and to empower the people who work in that building to have both the ownership of what they do and some control over the decisions that they make in terms of dealing with kids every day. It's been a great 20 years. It would be obviously foolish of me to say there's never been a bump in the road because there certainly have been, you know, along the way. But I also think too, that what I've tried to demonstrate and what we try to demonstrate for our kids every day in the middle school is that disappointment causes you to dig a little deeper into your resolve and your reserves and find that, that resilience and find that determination to kind of pick it up, put it back together and move forward. And I think in the end, with middle-level learners, that's one of the most important lessons that we can, that we can teach them and help them develop that resilience that is so important, you know, in this world in particular today. So I thank all of you for the opportunity to have been here and have served as Hudson's Middle School Principal for these 20 years. It's been a very gratifying experience for me. It has allowed me to use, year after year, the experiences of the years prior to help make what I thought and felt were better decisions for the upcoming year. So, thank you again. It's been a really great run and certainly I, I have enjoyed my 42 years in the profession and my 20 years here in Hudson. So, thank you.
All right. Don't go anywhere, Dan. Yeah, I was going to say, don't go anywhere because I think we have some board members that probably want to have a few comments and, I certainly do, but I'll defer right now. Is there any other board members?
Mr. President, if I, if I could, I, I have nothing prepared, but I certainly have a lot of things in my heart regarding Dan. Just a little bit of history, I think the middle school was built about one year or so earlier than the YMCA building was built. And of course, my involvement with the Y and the, and the opening of the middle school kind of held similar histories are, you know, we're a-
Same year.
The same year in terms of parallel tracks. You know, of course, when I'm, I'm an executive of a YMCA and many of my constituents are middle schoolers, I'm, I'm looking for expertise in the mind and the actions and the behavior of, of middle schoolers. And long before I knew Dan, I knew of Dan because of, of members of the YMCA would, would boast about this tremendous middle school and the outstanding leadership in Mr. Dan Koch. So I had the opportunity and Dan was gracious enough to serve on our YMCA board for a number of years and provide for us, I think, some very meaningful and important insight in terms of how we reach middle schoolers. That's, that's one testimonial to, to Dan. And as I've gotten to know him over the years, and by the way, as I was considering running for board nine years ago, Dan was, was very instrumental and influential in my decision to do so. And, and primarily because of my, my level of respect that I had grown, I've grown to respect Dan so much. But I would have to describe Dan as, as a kind of a, an unassuming, unpretentious leader. He's, he's the kind of individual that you really wouldn't know him personally as the out-front kind of flag-waver and attention-getter. But what you do see as a result of him is some tremendous outcomes and results in our middle school. And that's, it always starts at the top, and I keep telling Mary that. It always starts at the top and it does with Dan as well and it has. And probably the greatest, the greatest compliment, I think, that any, any leader could ever receive is the, the admiration and appreciation of his staff. I don't think there's a staff member that I know of in the middle school that doesn't, I don't know if I can say adore him, but, but certainly thinks so much of him. So, we're fortunate, Dan, to have, have had you. And my personal appreciation.
Any other board members? Lynn?
Well, I just wanted to say that as a board member, I've appreciated watching your leadership. I've appreciated watching you in these meetings as a fierce defender of the middle school concept. I didn't know what the middle school concept was when my kids were in elementary school. And when I went to the first information session and heard about sort of that transition from elementary to middle school, it was eye-opening. And as a board member, when I've watched you talk about it more and more and how that concept has eroded and how much you feel it is a key to the success of this middle school, I just want to thank you for being as passionate about that piece and telling and teaching the public and people how that middle school concept helps support the learning of the students. So thank you for that also. But as a parent, that first meeting that I went to where you introduced the parents to these students that they were going to be introduced to, to when they transitioned from elementary school to middle school, it was a very impactful meeting. And I just want to thank you for helping the parents make that transition and families make that transition and the difference that you've made in these kids' lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rose?
I'll try and be brief, but I also just want to say thank you. Certainly enjoyed as a new board member, just the conversations that we've had, the insight that you provided. My son is a sixth grader there this year and, and he absolutely loves going to middle school in Hudson. And it's, it's a testament, you know, to the culture that's been created there, the teachers that are there. We, we have a great group of individuals there and can only hope that, you know, the next leader that comes in understands that the, those individuals that are there are empowered and that they, you know, can make great decisions on their own and that next leader will have some big shoes to fill. But it's exciting, it's an exciting next step for you. You could be a motivational speaker, by the way, if you're interested in that. Every single point that you hit on right off the top of your head are, are very key to, you know, just strengthen and the basic moral of, you know, what we try and, and do in, in our lives. So, you know, thanks for what you've represented and all that you've done. We're very grateful for it.
Ryan?
Dan, as a tenured board member here with Mr. Holland, just even before that, really appreciate your service, your leadership. I've had two sons that go through there and had an outstanding, outstanding opportunity in front of them and really appreciate your leadership. Thank you.
Sandy? Yes. Sandy?
Dan, I just want to tell you, you've got my deepest appreciation and gratitude for making Hudson Middle School as good as it is. We all know it's because of you. We're going to miss you terribly. And I really hope that your retirement is everything you ever wanted it to be. You have a great time because it's a wonderful time in your life.
Thank you.
Carrie?
Dan, I don't think I'll be quite as eloquent as you were off the cuff, but I'd like to certainly echo everything that everyone has said. And I, I don't know if you realize, you, you also gave us a bit of advice in this community with your comment on resiliency and the setbacks that we perhaps are facing right now and that we need to take that as an opportunity moving forward. But thank you very much.
And Dan, I guess I'm the last one then. I just want to thank you for your dedication, your commitment, your loyalty. And the, you epitomize what we want to see in our leaders and you are part of the reason why Hudson is seen as an excellent school district. It was well-deserved to be Middle School Principal of the Year for the whole state. And then twice, we've been recognized for excellence. And just thinking about your history, the fact that 20 years in a position as a teacher is a little more frequent or a little more common, I guess, if you will, but still unaccomplished- is a little more frequent or a little more common, I guess, if you will, but still unaccomplishment. And then to be a principal and a leader of all those different people, you talked about the impact of hiring all those people. And that's what getting the right people in the right places is very important. But then you never lost sight of the importance of the individual student. And if you think about when you started, you were the first principal in that middle school, correct?
Jerry Donaski had the first year-
First year, all right. You were the second year. But that middle school, when it was built and when you started, had a little more than 200 kids per class, like you said, around 640 or whatever it was students, and now has over 1,300 or roughly 1,300. And so that's about doubling in a 20-year period of time. And if you take a little over 200 kids in that first class and now we've had over 400 kids in a class, that's roughly 6,000 students that you've overseen in their education. That's just tremendous legacy. Thank you. Personally, all three of my kids, you know, went through the middle school when you were there and appreciate your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Another hand. I guess with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept-
Do we?
Accept the resignation.
So moved.
Bruce moved.
Second.
Second by Brian. And if for the comment, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes. Dan, you're still with us though through the end of the year, so, all right, end of the school year, all right. With that, now we have to look forward to filling this position and Mary, you've got a report on next steps.
I do, and as I said, it's hard to think about another leader this fall, opening up the school year, but I know Dan cares deeply about that next leader and wanting a very strong leader to continue on and to support students and staff at Hudson Middle School. So with that being the case, with Dan's retirement, announced retirement, we're able to move forward at this time with the selection process for the next principal at the middle school. And so this is just informational for the board. It is a process that we have used before very successfully. And so we will post the position the week of January 19th, it might be a little earlier than that, but there will be a posting deadline of February 20th. And then the next three tasks really are to create a principal profile and characteristics of the principal that is supported by parents and staff so that we can use that to move forward during the selection process. And so I will be meeting with Hudson Middle School staff and Dan and I just worked on a date, that'll be this Monday, the 26th, so to talk about the process and characteristics at that time. Then we'll also set up a meeting with parent representatives, and so we're hoping to get that meeting set up in the next week. And then February 6th is the deadline, there'll be a staff survey about characteristics as well. So moving forward to the screening process for candidates, there'll really be two paths, one for external candidates and potentially one for internal administrative candidates if there are any. So first I'll go through the external process. We will screen credentials and that will be all the administrators doing that, and that will be completed by February 24th. There will be telephone screenings of the top candidates that are identified. And then we'll hold a first interview, as we have done in the past, by a large team of staff, parents, and administrator representatives. With that, we'll do reference checks on the top candidates that we're looking at moving forward to the final. And then what we're really gearing the process so that the new superintendent that the board selects could hold the second interviews and make the final selection of the middle school principal. So if moving on with that, internal candidates, if there was an administrator who is coming forward, who is interested in being considered for this position in Hudson, they would go through a district administration review. And then we would consider the qualifications of that administrator. And then if the decision was made to move them forward, they would be part of the second interviews that the new superintendent would conduct as well as any external candidates. There could be a possible site visit for an external candidate. And what we would want to do for the internal candidate next, if they were moving forward, would be staff and parent representatives being able to give some feedback before the superintendent makes that final decision. We're hoping for an April 14th, that is the board meeting in April, that recommendation to the Board of Education, but it's kind of dependent on the new superintendent's schedule and calendar and freedom to conduct those final interviews. So we assume it will be in April, not exactly sure if we can make the board meeting, but we want to do it as early as possible to have the best candidate finalized. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those or address them.
Tom, you have a question?
Mr. President, Mary, when would you anticipate this position actually taking office, taking the position?
Well, Dan's last day would be June 30th, and so this person, we would hope, could start July 1. We would certainly put in place a transition plan and hope that there could be some overlap before Dan finishes up. And then there would certainly be support by our principal colleagues and district administration as well.
Any other questions regarding this process? Again, we've had, got several of these with the superintendent and we're gonna be doing interviews on pre-referendum market tax and we've already done it for the superintendent consultant, so anyway, we've got more work to do and this is something that comes back to the board hopefully in about 90 days.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, any other questions? All right, with that, the next action item is open enrollment and the issue of regular education and special education space availability. And this is something that again, was presented to-
Facilities and grounds, I believe.
Facilities and grounds, thank you. And so why don't I just turn it over now to, you know, Andrea and Tony as appropriate? Tony, I know you have the special education and Andrea, you have recommendations with regard to the various schools and levels of education, so.
Correct. So, what we did with this analysis, as pursuant to board policy and state statute, we have to do an annual determination with respect to the number of seats that are open for purposes or seats available for purposes of open enrollment. What you can see in the first box there is the high school projection. And what we do is we roll up the class to the subsequent year from 14, 15 to 15, 16, and then also roll up eighth grade into ninth grade. In addition to that, and that's the numbers that you see here, but in addition to that, we add in the average number of Hudson resident students entering the high school in the ninth grade from St. Pat's and Trinity over the past seven years, which is 37 students. So you can see our projected enrollment for 2015, 16 at the high school is 1,795. Our total seat capacity is 1,680 students, so we are 115 students over capacity. Thus, it's the administrative recommendation that there not be any open seats for purposes of open enrollment at the high school.
All right. So, and you're gonna just give your whole report as opposed to us adopting-
Yes. Yep, I'll go through the different buildings and then Tony will do the analysis for special education and then we'll make a, we'll turn it over for you for action.
All right.
And certainly questions as well.
All right.
So the next chart is the middle school projected enrollment for 2015, 16. And again, we did the same analysis with respect to rolling up the numbers. We also added in the average introduction of St. Pat's and Trinity students over the past seven years, which is 14 students. So adding those numbers in, our projected enrollment for 15, 16 is 1,289 students. Our building capacity at the middle school is 1,125 students, 164 students over capacity. Thus, again, it's a recommendation that there not be any available seats for the middle The next information is on elementary schools and very similar analysis where for 15, 16, we rolled up the prior grades. You'll see there's an asterisk next to the kindergarten. We don't yet have registration for kindergarten, that's February 2nd, I believe, or February 3rd. And so what we did was we used our current enrollment at first grade and just put it down to kindergarten. So then we maintain the sections that are currently in first grade for kindergarten as well. And so we just move both the students and the section numbers forward a year. And so based on that analysis, our recommendation is as follows, that for 15, 16, there would be eight recommended seats for open enrollment in kindergarten, eight seats at first grade, four seats in second grade, 43 seats in third grade, 21 seats in fourth grade, two seats for fifth grade, for a total of 86 seats open for purposes of open enrollment. And now Tony will discuss in more detail the special education seats available.
So, in regard to special education, I used a similar process to what Andrea just described in terms of rolling the students up into the next grade level, but I also looked at a few other variables as well. So you can see on the slide here that I've looked at the levels, again, elementary, middle, and high school, and then I considered the students by their special education program or the services that they receive. And then in order to get a projected enrollment that more closely matches what we're seeing in special education, I actually applied the growth rate that we're seeing in special education over the last three years, which has significantly outpaced our overall district growth. So that's been 8.3% in special education over the last three years. So I built that factor in as well. And then I looked at how many staff we have in each of the programs and the preferred enrollment that we have. And this is similar to what we did with the regular education that Andrea talked about. The board has adopted caseload guidelines and instead of getting to the top level of the guideline, I built in a proration of 90%. So the preferred enrollment is actually 90% of the maximum board-approved guideline in each of these programs. And then you can see, based on that analysis, the available space in each of the programs. At the elementary level, well, just looking down the available space column, you can see that we have a number of negatives, meaning we're in a space deficit in those areas, and we also have a number of small positive numbers. When we have those small positive numbers, we're not recommending open enrollment seats because we want to leave opportunities for students to move back in, whether they be in out-of-place, out-of-district placements, we're able to move them back into our district, or students coming back to us from out-of-district open enrollment. So, students that have chosen to go elsewhere often come back, we want to leave spaces available for them as well. At the elementary level, all of the programs, we're recommending to be closed except for the cross-categorical services at our neighborhood schools. We're recommending 10 seats available there. And then at the middle and high school levels, as Andrea had said, we're closed to regular education, open enrollment in those programs. However, there are some students in special education that may not be involved in any regular education courses. So for those students, I examined the more self-contained programs. Those are the EBD, the autism, and the cognitive disabilities program. Students in those programs may not take regular education classes, so we examine those outside of the regular education, open enrollment. And there you can also see that we're running at negative space or just very, very small positive space. So again, we're recommending closed to open enrollment at middle and high school level for all of our special education programs.
A couple other quick notes, just I forgot to mention before that there was consensus at the Buildings and Grounds Committee to move it forward, support the administrative recommendation for the slots or the seats identified. In addition, just to put the public on notice as well, that the enrollment, open enrollment period begins February 2nd, 2015, and goes through April 30th, 2015.
And you're looking for this board to take action to either adopt the recommendation, I guess would be the-
Yes, that's our request at this time, is that the board, well, the board does have to take action specifically, but it's our recommendation that the high school and middle school be closed for open enrollment purposes and then identified seats at the elementary level be approved.
Mr. President?
Yes, Tom?
I move the approval of the administrator's recommendation for open enrollment as it relates to elementary, middle school, high school, and special education as it's been presented.
Second.
Right, motion by Tom, second by Brian. And right now, this is just determining the slots, then there's an application process. We don't find out the numbers of people who have applied and then actually enroll until September?
That actually enroll, yes. We'll have, the board will be taking action, with the deadline the end of April, you typically take action in May to approve the applicants. But then they decide at that point if they wish to actually enroll or not.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
This is the discussion time, correct?
Yes.
Andrea, I just have a question, I'm looking at these and I looked at these after we left the meeting the other night and the question came to me. So, in the third grade, there are 1,413 students enrolled and we're open enrolling an additional 43. In kindergarten and first grade and second grade, those actual enrollment numbers are smaller and we're open enrolling fewer kids. Okay, so I understand the idea of the sections?
Correct.
So there's fewer sections in those lower three grades and that's why we have fewer seats available, correct?
Right, and in addition, our class size guidelines change. So from kindergarten to second grade, it's 18 to 22 per class, and once you hit third grade, it's 22 to 27.
Okay. So then in third grade, we're open enrolling 43 students, and how many students did you say are in a class in third grade? 20, what did you say?
22 to 27.
22 to 27. So, so this looks to me like we are keeping a section or two of third grade open for open enrollment? Am I looking at this wrong?
Well, it's a little different than that just because we do the analysis based on the neighborhood schools. And so there may be-
Neighborhood school? Oh, the-
The different elementary buildings. And so there may be more, I mean, it may be at 22 at one, at North Hudson, for example, per section, and then they would have more students potentially that we could put in that group or in that class at that building as compared to other sections. So it may cumulative, cumulatively be a bigger impact, I'm trying to think if I'm saying this right, because it's not, if it was just two classes with only one elementary school, then yes, that would be the case. But because it's dispersed amongst the different buildings-
Okay.
It's not quite that straightforward, does that make sense?
Right, I get it. It's not quite as simple as saying we have two sections of 22 or 20-some students each and we could just do away with those and we wouldn't have any open enrollment. It isn't that easy because it's spread about through all the buildings.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That explains it.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have a question on taking action on the specific applicants in, I can't remember if it was April or May, but- In May. I thought that because there was a change in policy that we will not be taking action on the individual applicants?
Right.
Yes, Mr. President.
So this is the meeting where we're looking at whether or not there's enough seats on the bus and who gets on the bus, we won't be deciding.
Right, I was gonna offer clarification on that as well. Yep, you approved a revised open enrollment policy and we had moved the actual individual applicant determinations to an administrative decision. So this is the only board action you'll be taking on open enrollment.
All right. Maybe my question was where it was confusing, but we only hear about the financial impact of this once the kids are enrolled, correct? Students are enrolled.
Right, yeah, because it's, you know, it's really difficult until we get the report from the state on exactly who went. You know, not everybody that applies goes. So, we have, we have an idea in budgeting, we look at that. Currently, in the 14, 15 budget, we have a deficit, if you look at open enrollment in and open enrollment out, we have a deficit of about $300,000.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a suggestion or have the board consider it at least, since we don't take individual action on the numbers, that there's a report that comes back to us telling us what those numbers were. I mean, they obviously impact things like budget and if we're not gonna be having a meeting where we're taking action, I think it'd be reasonable to have him in a report where we know how many ended up being fulfilled of the numbers that we approved.
All right. I think that we can do that. So just to follow up on Sandy's comment, maybe with the 43, you know, that is in the third grade, that also recognize that that's the grade in which the jump in class size recommendation. But that 43 is kind of dispersed throughout the different 19 sections. My question is, going back to kind of the presentation report that Dave gave, with the ongoing plan at Hudson Prairie and the cutting back of rolling up smaller sections, so we're only going to a three-section school instead of a four-section, why would third grade have 19 sections? Why wouldn't that be down to 18? Why wouldn't that be down to eighteen?
Let me, I'm sorry, I'm just looking, I have one other spreadsheet open here. Currently, third grade is still three-section, or is three-sections at Prairie already.
Okay. All right, so, so that's already been factored in?
Will be, I'm sorry, will be next year, three sections.
Okay. So do we add a section at another school? How do we keep it at nineteen then? Was it, or was it twenty before for this grade?
I, I'm not certain the number, I'd have to check the, the number of sections. I don't know if you have...
I have, so are you saying, I'm sorry, your question one more time?
Well, because we were talking about, we're eliminating sections at Hudson Prairie. Started with kindergarten four years ago, and then we've been going up as we need classrooms for the middle school.
Right.
And I'm assuming we're not adding sections at other schools, or maybe we are. I'm just wondering why, we've got seventeen and seventeen for kindergarten and first grade, eighteen for second, so with third grade, since this is the fourth year, will be the fourth year of this plan, why that wouldn't be eighteen for next year?
Then a different building would, and I'm just looking at the specific differentiation between the buildings. There is an additional section at North Hudson in the third grade as compared to the prior year.
And that's because, again, of, happens to be a grade where there's more North Hudsonites?
Exactly. And to keep it within the class size guidelines, we needed to do that.
Okay. Otherwise, we're pushing beyond that twenty-seven per class.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Bruce?
Not to belabor this particular topic, but just trying to understand where we've got the negatives in the special ed sections. I mean, are we staffed for that? Are we, how are we handling it? We're not running around on carts for that, so can you maybe just talk to that a little bit and how we're managing that?
Well, at, at this point, Bruce, we haven't moved into the staffing phase for the fifteen, sixteen school year, so some of these numbers are very concerning to us, and I actually brought that forward at our adult meeting last week, that there may need to, to be some conversation about that. Right now, this isn't reflective of where we're at. We are staffed appropriately for our current students.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Oh, and I just, I just saw something that popped out at me. I hadn't seen this before, when, went through the materials to prepare for the meeting, but under speech language service for elementary, it looks to me like the preferred enrollment would be one-eighty-nine, so we should have a positive number instead of a negative number on that line. Or was that a misprint of the preferred?
I'm sure that, that was a, a data entry error on my part.
Okay.
Thanks for the catch, Jamie.
Sorry. Didn't mean to, you know, cause problems or anything like that. But, but you're confident we don't need to, we don't have any open slots in the speech and language service at the elementary level?
No, we would not. A majority of those students, that, you bring up a good point. Speech and language, I looked at a little bit differently than the other programs. I looked at it based on service load, so many of those students are also represented in the other groups that you see up there. They have cognitive disabilities, they have autism spectrum disorders, they have emotional behavioral disorders. So a large percentage of them are already accounted for. It's a duplication, and so it, it wouldn't, I would recommend closing.
All right. Very good. Any further comments? Otherwise, we'll take the vote. I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand, so all in favor of adopting the recommendations and for open enrollment in those few grades at the elementary level and in the one category for elementary special ed, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes. Next on our agenda are, I guess it's contracts, and this is the 2014-15 Certified Staff, Support Staff Managers, Coordinators, Administrators, Salaries, Wages, and Contracts. Again, a long way of introducing the topic of compensation, and this is all about human resources, so I'm just going to turn it over to Andrea. We've had both a work session on this as well as refinement on a couple points with the Personnel Committee prior to tonight's action. So why don't you give your overview of what's being proposed, Andrea?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you indicated, we had a board work session on December fifteenth, where through certainly thorough discussion and debate and analysis, there was an agreement to move forward with, to this board meeting, a revised proposal when it comes to an administrative recommendation for 2014-15 salary and wage recommendations. It's important to point out that this is a recommendation, as you all know, for all staff members, and that we differentiate it in a few different areas. Specifically, with respect to certified staff, and for purposes of this analysis, we're including teachers, school psychs, counselors, school nurses, social workers, and deans of students. Our recommendation is to increase all staff members, all certified staff, two point six percent unless otherwise specified below. In addition to that, given continuing concerns with respect to the elimination of salary structure and the fact that we're in the second year of our multi-year strategic compensation plan whereby we're currently creating a new salary structure for staff, we have this continuing window of time where there's not a structure in place, and that continues to present problems as we've discussed at length at the work session. So to address that particular concern, as you know, we had a significant investment last year in our certified staff to increase internal consistency when it comes to salaries. This year, we're recommending a more modest adjustment for certain individuals to deal with significant discrepancies in compensation, or issues, concerns, when it comes to the movement from our newer staff where they go from probationary status to non-probationary status, which is certainly a great accomplishment in the district. Where we have a recommendation here where we create a base salary for non-probationary teachers who have their bachelor's degree of forty thousand dollars. We would adjust those staff who are not at the base accordingly, and that would be before the two point six percent increase is applied. The forty thousand dollars is significant in that, again, they're meeting our expectations and they have completed probation, and they'd be moving forward to that forty thousand dollars starting salary in surrounding districts, such as River Falls, and this isn't even past probation, it's starting salary. At River Falls is thirty-nine thousand, in Richmond is thirty-eight thousand, Somerset's forty thousand. By moving our non-probationary teachers to forty thousand, we think that's a critical movement. This would affect eighteen staff members at this time, some who have upwards of six years of experience in the district. Our other, our second recommendation is to create a base salary for probationary teachers who have their master's degree of forty thousand three sixty-one. There's two teachers that would be affected by that. In addition, they would also have a two percent, two point six percent increase applied. The final adjustment for certified staff would be to create a base salary for non-probationary teachers who have their master's degree, again, non-probationary, so they've accomplished the objective, have been of getting beyond probation, and they've been here at least three years, and that salary would be a minimum of forty-two thousand. Another two people would be affected by that recommendation. So that's the certified staff recommendation, and I can move forward with the other recommendation.
Let's just keep rolling on.
Keep on rolling, okay? I'll go for it. The other recommendation is for support staff, supervisors, managers, coordinators, and administrators. Recommendation here is a two percent increase for the, all those classifications unless I differentiate as otherwise below. The salary adjustments above the two percent increase that we recommend here is based solely on market, primarily on market comparability. And the market comparability analysis was done by looking at the ten comparable districts that the board had determined last year. So using those ten districts, we make the following recommendations. The first one is a school age care. Summer staff position, we would eliminate summer rates, instead align all school age care staff with the school year rates, and that would be effective this coming summer. Finance manager position, recommendation is after applying the two percent increase, we add market adjustment of five thousand seven hundred and forty-two, again, comparability-driven. School age care coordinator, again, after the two percent, have a market adjustment of three thousand six hundred and eighty-five. School to work coordinator, after the two percent, add a market adjustment of three thousand two hundred and sixty-eight. And then a benefit specialist, we'd move to step three of the support staff schedule. After applying, then when it comes to administrators, after applying the two percent increase, we provide for these following adjustments. And this is to recognize not only comparable data, but also performance and a differentiation between probationary and veteran administrators. We provide for new contributions to an individual TSA, and it's detailed here. I don't know if you want me to go through all the details for each individual. I could certainly go through that if you so choose, but there's a recommendation to have new contributions towards TSAs in addition to modify contract language to provide for the market adjustments to salaries for administrators as well. The, the third component would be for administrators to integrate contract language in probationary administrator contracts to transition administrators from probationary to veteran status as applicable, which would include an automatic salary adjustment upon reaching veteran status.
And just to stop you there, that probationary status is basically the first two years?
Correct, the first two years. So it would be, upon completion of the second year, successful completion of the second year, they would move to non-probationary or veteran status. The final item would be to, would be my recommendation to execute to, the new two-year contracts, and all of this proposed tonight would be retroactive July one, but the contract specifically would also be retroactive to July one, 2014, for all administrators except those retiring at the end of the, June 2015. And that is a recommendation.
Okay. Any questions or motion?
Mr. President, just, you know, this is, for those people out there that are listening to this, I'm sure it's a muddled, sounds like a muddled mess, but frankly, this has been, the challenge that we've got, and I have to give a great deal of credit to Andrea for, for working on this, but the balance that we're working with here is that, as Andrea had said in her initial comments, we're working towards a comprehensive compensation plan, of which, when it's completed, we'll identify ranges and scope of work and so forth. At the same time, while that's being developed, we have a situation where we've got staff that are falling behind in comparables to other staff in other districts and so forth. We don't want to do something that's going to put us in a, in a, in a awkward or awkward position once this comprehensive compensation plan is done, but at the same time, we still need to remain competitive, or to, to become competitive in the marketplace now that we're in, in this state. So this is what we're balancing, and for the life of me, I don't, I don't know how Andrea does it. It's got to be a torturous act to have to go through all these details. Maybe your brain works different than mine, but, but virtually, that's what we're dealing with. We're dealing with this balance between trying to remain competitive, but not do something that's going to put us in a position that's going to bite us, you know, once this, this compensation plan is completed. So, and we have worked on this, and worked on this, and talked about this, and talked about this to nauseam, and I just wanted to try to give some kind of layman's explanation to this for the, for the public in a, in an overview.
And just to add to that, I certainly, anytime we're developing this, it's certainly an administrative team, and we're all utilizing each other's strengths as we're developing this, this type of proposal. But overarching concern throughout every conversation we have is retention. Keeping our awesome staff, our awesome staff top to bottom, especially at a time like this where there's a transition that's going to be occurring. Retention is even more so important, so just wanted to emphasize that as well.
Absolutely, yep.
And I think that we also have one more. I didn't know if Tim was saving this slide, if he wanted to comment on the slide about comparing the two budgets, or we just wait until there's a question about it. But I just noticed when I was clicking on the next that, that was something that was in our materials, and...
Sure.
If you want to explain that, I think it's...
Yeah, but, yeah, what I, what I wanted to do is give you a little more information on the wages, salaries, and benefits. So, and just comparing the two budget years, thirteen, fourteen, and fourteen, fifteen, and I don't know if, I won't go through all that detail, I don't know if anybody has questions...
You don't have to name every figure, but...
But, you know, maybe I'll just open it up if you, if you have any questions with that.
It's broken out by salary and wages and benefits separately, correct?
Right, yeah. It all ties back to what was approved in the adopted budget.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So can you maybe speak to a couple of points on here? More interested, more in the decrease side. The supervisory went down about ten percent, and it looks like the retirement, and I don't know what all the acronyms are there, so can you maybe help out? But that was about an eight percent decrease, give or take. But could you maybe just speak to some of those decreases in the, in the general fund?
Sure. You speak to the supervisory line item. So that went down about seventy-eight thousand. It was really, what that was is a reclassification. So it was reclassified up into the administrator section. That was, we're required to report, if a position changes, we're required to report it under a different account code through state rules, so that was merely just a reclassification. The, the health and dental line item, health, dental, life, long-term disability insurance, that one, was that the one you were asking about?
No, the, the one below that.
Oh, down, down below under retirement. Okay, yeah, the, the Wisconsin retirement system and then the other post-employee benefits, that, that one ebbs and flows, which generally the other post-employee benefits number, that one does rise up and down depending on the retire, the retirees, the number of retirees we have. And then also, you approve some changes to that, to those benefits. Those benefits are going to be sliding down over time, so there'll be, there'd be additional changes in that as we go forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Brian?
And just a couple of general comments on this, kind of addition to what Tom had to say. Just, first of all, we're competing for talent. It's a competitive marketplace now, so we're competing against talent in Wisconsin, Minnesota, so we have to make sure we're paying competitive salaries, otherwise we're not going to get good talent, just the way it works. So it's a, people are, have a, it's, it's a market. So number one. Number two is, I also look in out-years, although I won't be on the board, I look, I do look for ways of rewarding our top performers. Although we're proud of our, our team and our staff, there's those that are performing at a, at a level that's higher than, higher than average. A lot of different ways to reward them. It could be compensation, it could be more professional development, it could be other investments that are important to those individuals. So I think that will be an important part of our strategy going forward. And then also make sure that we have, if we set a high bar, there are going to be some, certain employees that don't, that don't make it. They don't make it in Hudson, and that's okay. And so, but this right here, this action here, we have to be competitive. Otherwise, we can have, we can have, we can be the district we're for in terms of professional development and investing in our, in our staff, but we got to make sure we're paying competitive salaries.
And Mr. President, to go along with Brian's point there, if anybody is, has a ser, a significant discipline, has a performance improvement plan, has notice of a pending performance improvement plan, or any probationary employee who is not meeting the district's expectations, they would not get an increase. And that's detailed in the proposal, the one-page document earlier.
So that we have some employees who are under performance improvement plans, for instance, they would not be eligible for that, for this two point six percent increase in the case of the certified staff?
Correct, or any support staff individuals, or anybody else who would be, fall into one of those four categories would not receive an increase for the fourteen, fifteen school year.
Now, I note that, you know, there was a two percent kind of base for non-certified staff, and then two point six applied to all. This, again, is, as has been pointed out, precursor to putting into a compensation system in place, and that needs to be done by, I guess, the fall?
Our goal is to have the new salary structure approved by the board, hopefully by the end of the school year.
Right, by the end of the school year.
So implement starting July, so going forward to the, into the next school year, yes.
Which is a product of Act Ten, and prior to Act Ten, I think we've got two board members, or three maybe total, that were prior to Act Ten, back in the days when there was a union.
How's it Act One?
You were Act One, there you go. Well, it's just a different, totally different atmosphere. Instead of negotiating with the teachers to establish what the compensation's going to be, it's a different system where you basically have to look around and what are... you basically have to look around and what are your competitors doing.
So are we looking to do a motion on this, just one motion on, on this plan?
Yes, if possible.
Move to approve the plan?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just have a few more questions.
Second.
All right, well, there's a motion and a second now on the board, but we can still have discussion, so.
Yeah, so we talked about the competitiveness, I just want to talk about that a little bit because retention is key, but we also know retention has a lot of other components to it as well, right? I mean, we look at the personal development that we have here, and there's been a lot of time, effort, and energy that's been put to that. So I guess regarding specifically the competitiveness, we looked at some analysis when we looked at certain categories, but when we look at the overall competitiveness of where we're at as a district, can you speak to that a little bit? In terms of where we're at, you know, in our journey towards making sure that we've got a very competitive offering from a compensation package?
Sure, definitely, and I think with the focus being on salary tonight would be, our goal with the administrators, including principals, directors, APs, was to get towards the average, near the average or near the median amongst our comparable districts. We won't get there with certified staff, frankly. If we, to get there, just to get average amongst our comparables, would be about an 8% increase to our certified staff. It's not in the budget, so we did what we could within our budget, and in addition, we had a significant investment last year that occurred as well. We, a priority in developing this plan was to make sure we put some money where we could, but also not to do any harm, so that we didn't negatively have trickle-down impacts of a movement here, movement there, that could upset the apple cart for purposes of rolling out the new salary structure next year. So from that perspective, we're not where we need to be, in my mind, certainly with certified staff, because the biggest hurdle in my mind is Minnesota districts. There, it's collectively bargained there, and they get steps in lanes. Certainly, Wisconsin districts have moved away from that for the most part, but there is some movement, and that's problematic when we haven't had that since the elimination of the salary structure.
I'm sure Wisconsin's the least worth 5%, though. It's a great state. But I, you know, just one other, I guess, closing comment is, you know, the retention piece, the comp package, you know, the professional development's all important. Got a pretty considerable turnover right now with a new superintendent that we'll be hiring here, we also have, you know, Mr. Koch, who we received a resignation from earlier tonight, you know, those are some changes that are maybe going to shake a few folks that we want to make sure that, you know, at least from my perspective, they understand that, you know, their gainful employment here and the commitment that we put to, you know, our staff in this community is, is well-recognized. So, you know, I think those changes, while we're going to do our best to make sure we bring the best leaders in here, you know, it's important that they understand, along with that, that, you know, as a board, we support our staff here and what they bring for our students and our kids every day.
Mr. President?
Sandy.
There are a lot of things in this plan that I could support, that I would vote yes for, but there are also a number of things that I can't support, because everything is lumped together. We have to make one vote on all of this. Since I've been on the board, the salaries and benefits category on our budgets has gone up, I think, just about $4 million since I've been on the board in three years. I would call for a roll call vote on this issue.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just, just, just so that there's awareness of this, Sandy wasn't, was not present at the meeting where we had a work session on this and went through this in a lot of detail, and so just make sure that's, something we put on the table.
All right. I wanted to follow up, there was a comment, Andrew, you noted that the most important factor in this, or most pressing, is the Minnesota, because of our proximity to Minnesota and because they still have collective bargaining. What are some of these more recent increases, you know, been in comparable districts?
Specifically Minnesota, you mean?
Yeah, I'm looking at that.
About, I believe it was a, sorry, I did have a, I believe it was upwards of 6%, 7% over the two-year contract, which was just added on 2% per cell for Minnesota school districts. That doesn't even factor in the steps and lane movement that was automatic as part of their structure.
So whereas our base is 2% or 2.6, theirs is 6%, 6% to 7% over two-year period, plus movement of lanes?
Plus, yep, step and lane movement.
And back when we had collective bargaining, Tim, what were some of the movements? Do you have any figures from prior to Act 10, what we would be?
You could, you know, if I look back at a year where we did have, we had a percent per cell, we put, we had lanes, we had steps, was 10/11, and that was about 5.9, so just under 6% just for salaries.
Is that a one-year or two-year period?
That, that was just for one year.
One year, all right. All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would just like to comment that Mr. Bell's observation that I was not at the meeting where this was discussed is accurate, but I did have a meeting with the administrators in Mary after that, 45-minute meeting, where they caught me up on this information, so I believe I'm not voting on this yes or no in a vacuum. I do have enough knowledge about what's happening here for me to form an opinion.
And Mr. President?
Yes.
You know, I, I think, just to comment on Sandy's point earlier, I mean, I've, we've been in a number of meetings together, and I know that you're very supportive of the staff and making sure that, you know, we're getting the right plans in place, and, you know, to your point around a, a number of the pieces that we, you could agree on and some that you may not agree on, you know, I, I, there are certain things that I, I think I would look at a little bit in that way as well. I don't know that we're going to get to 100% that, you know, the way I'd like to see it personally, but I, you know, personally, I think the professional development is, weighs a lot. I think the, the teachers yearn for that, and the fact that, you know, our leaders are as close to them as they are and work with them as much as they do, I think is extremely important for our, for our staff here. So I, you know, again, I just, I wanted to reiterate the fact that I recognize in the meetings, I mean, you are definitely behind the, the staff and, and, you know, the, the individuals that work for our kids every single day, so just wanted to recognize that.
Thank you.
All right, and I also want to clarify that while the motion's on the table, the motion's been made and seconded to just approve this as a group, there is no requirement that we have to do it in one motion, but that's the current form of the.
It's a motion on the table.
That's the motion on the table, and unless there's a motion to amend, we'll move forward with, I guess, a vote unless there's further comment or questions. Or motions. Hearing none, then I guess we'll start with Carrie.
Whitaker, aye.
Hanson, aye.
Robson, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Bell, aye.
Holland, aye.
Gurkien, no.
All right, so the compensation recommendations are approved, and I guess we'll be signing those new contracts and so forth. Next up is school resource officer. This one is assigned to you again, Andrea. I hope your vocal cords will hold up.
Yeah, we'll just keep on going. So as you know, the district has been negotiating with the city to add a second school resource officer. We are now in agreement as to terms with respect to the agreement, which you'll be voting on tonight. We've also gone through the interview process in conjunction with the city of Hudson and specifically the police department, and have selected James Wildman, subject to certainly board action on the contract, but have selected James Wildman as the second school resource officer, and again, if it's approved tonight, the city of Hudson has already approved it, so that's complete, but if it's approved by the board tonight, then we're hopeful that the start date would be January 26 for the new position.
Okay, that's fairly quick. But this has been approved by the city, so is there a motion to approve this new contract, I guess, for school resource officer?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Lynn, second by Brian. Any further questions or comments?
Mr. President, this is, this is one that I wanted to pay particular attention to. I understand that we're paying a little bit more in percentage now than we have in the past. Now it's a 75, 25 split. The, the school district is paying 75% whereas the, the city is not, is paying 25, and my principal concern, and I just want your assurance, and then you're feeling like you have some assurance from this contract, I've read through the contract, I believe it provides for it, I hope, but I just want to bring it out again, and that is that, do we have safeguards in place, to your satisfaction, to assure ourselves that we'll, we'll get 75% services? Because I know that the, there's language in this contract that says that the, the police department, the city can't guarantee that they can always provide an officer, you know, every time, so, and I know also that there's a, some language in here about if there's a missing of five days or so, that there's, there's compensation or there's credit being given back, so I'm, I'm just asking the question, so.
Yeah, the, the agreement, Tom, it really, the whole, the whole, you know, the whole idea of a school resource officer and what we have here really benefits the city and the school district, it's a, it's really a win-win situat, situation. We did agree to pick up more of the costs, so 75% for both officers going forward, and that was, that was in line with what, when we started to analyze the costs that the district did incur for these officers, that was, was pretty much in line with, with a, you know, really a fairness idea, and, and you did note, yes, if the officer is unable and has more than five, at least five days, then there's a proration back, so, well, we haven't, to my knowledge, we haven't had an issue there with our first officer, and so adding the two officers, it's something we, we look at. City also did provide a sample of the calculation for the costs, and that is in line with what we had been experiencing before.
And my understanding from the reading, this is that we have the ability to review this annually, so, okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Bruce?
I mean, isn't the premise behind this, though, I mean, the costs still all generally go back to the taxpayer, right? So, I mean, the idea of us taking on 75% is really more to spread those costs amongst all the different areas within the district that are receiving those services?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, again, it's going back to the amount of time, part of it's the amount of time that we use that officer, so the city is able to use that officer at certain times during the summer, although these officers also are going to be serving during summer school as well, so when we add up all the different days that they're going to be serving the district, you know, we, we've got over 70% of the cost that really is the, the school district cost.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and I have another question, is being a lawyer, and the language in these contracts, other than the change in the compensation, the split of the pay for these officers, or the responsibility for that, is there any other major contract, contractual language change?
No, primarily I would say it was cleanup, consistency throughout. In the past, there were some discrepancies or use of different verbiage, and the other addition was just reference from one to two, the change there, and that was made consistently throughout as well.
Right.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy.
Can you tell me, Tim, what the, is the 75, 25 what the contract has always been for officer number one? It was different than that, wasn't it?
Sure, yeah, that was, that was 67, we, the district was picking up 67%.
We paid 67? Okay, now with the renewal of that, the contract for officer number one, we're now going to 75, 25.
Right, yeah.
And it was always 75, 25 for officer number two, correct?
Yes, that was, yeah, that was the initial agreement, or initial discussion.
I just needed clarification on that, thank you.
Sure.
I also think that needs to be clarified too, that officer one, if you will, is the, would be the officer that's been at the high school for all these years. Officer two is going to be stationed at the middle school and with service then middle school and all elementary schools.
Correct.
I would like to thank the city for their expansion of our school resource officer program with this agreement, and then recognize Chief Marty Jensen's support for this and leadership to move this forward.
Thank you. Is there any, is there a motion then? Did we have, did we already have a motion?
So moved.
All right, well, we do now, all right. So motion by Lynn?
Second.
Second by Sandy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Last on our action items before the consent items would be the board policy, and this is, as I understand it, a change that's going to reflect actually more awards and scholarships being made available, and so there's some revision in addition to this new technical excellence award. So Sandy Kovac, I would just turn it over to you and give us a very brief overview. I know we went over this in.
Learning and program.
Great depth at the learning program development.
Correct, thank you. And so presenting information regarding one policy and two procedures that pertain to student awards and scholarships, so you see on your screen currently the policy, and we just, I worked with Nancy Sweet, and we really cleaned up language here, thinking we were improving the language in that first paragraph, added the second one so that we do announce where that information is found in the counseling office for students, and then the third paragraph was added to take note of the fact that we're making then two procedures, and that there is one for the Wisconsin academic excellence, and then I'll talk more about the new one, the Wisconsin technical excellence. Most of the remainder stays the same, and then there was one other further down improvement from WASB, they noted that we needed to add color and religion to the nondiscrimination statement, so that's really the improvements then of the policy. What we decided from there, Tim, I'll have you click kind of two pages forward to that first policy, is we took the Wisconsin academic, they were guidelines before, and so we're making two procedures, one to pertain to the Wisconsin academic scholarship and the other to the technical scholarship, the new one, and so in the, both of those procedures, you're going to find the eligibility requirements, the determination criteria, and then the guidelines should we require a tiebreaker. I talked to a counselor just today, Deb Johnson deals with this quite a bit on the academic side, and she said it's been at least eight years before we've ever needed a tiebreaker. So as you know, the academic one has been around for several years, due to our size, the size of our high school, we do submit then four scholarships to the state for the academic scholarship, as well as we always have to put in alternates, so that should someone not attend a Wisconsin school or other factors, that we'd have alternate, alternates there. What's exciting, and I'm going to have Tim then click a couple more forward, is the new opportunity for our students, and we wanted to make sure they knew that this evening. The new state law awards scholarships to students who have demonstrated an exemplary level of proficiency in technical education subjects. So each recipient would receive $2,250 for up to three years of full-time study at any participating Wisconsin technical college, and the first awards are available to graduating high school seniors in 2014, 15, if a district has a procedure governing the local administration, hence our need to come this evening. And the Wisconsin Higher Ed Board administers both of those scholarships, they had recommended language for this new Wisconsin technical, we incorporated that into our procedure. If we decide to have something different in the future, they suggested to start with theirs and then look at how it goes forward. They're going to also be looking and evaluating how it goes this first year. So we're already kind of looking at what students qualify for the new scholarship, and the one difference I do want to note, just especially for the board and those listening in our public, is that in this case, the Wisconsin technical students need to apply, they have to express interest, that doesn't happen in the academic. So we'll be working in the next week to come up with a form and then start pursuing those students who do qualify. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Bruce.
You know, I, I, I know we talked about a lot of different things during the, the meeting, but, you know, the one thing I didn't mention, I mean, this is nice that the state's recognizing that, you know, the proficiency and the technical skills that, you know, students are coming out with, the shift a little bit in terms of the four-year degree versus the technical schools that are out there, and that, you know, kind of change as well, where you're seeing more kids come out and not necessarily, you know, go straight to college, you know, where they're either taking the technical side of it or, you know, coming out and ready to work. So. So I, I, I think it's, it's nice that the state recognized that, it's exciting for the kids, I think, in our district to have an opportunity for those that, you know, want to take that track to be the best that they can be, and, you know, have some new scholarship opportunities, so this is awesome.
Yep, the state is taking several initiatives to really support school to career, and the technical and the manufacturing side, and all the careers that are associated with two-year programs.
You had mentioned that we get four academic ones, 2,500 each, what are the size and number for the technical?
Four also, because of our size.
And the same amount of money?
Correct.
All right. All right, very good. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sandy, second by Bruce, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, next I will take a motion to approve consent items with the language regarding expenditures provided.
Mr. President, I move approval of the consent items, and that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,771,074.92.
Is there a second? All right, motion by Lynn, second by Carrie. All those in favor, say aye.
Just one quick comment on the consent, you know, we, we actually have a gentleman up in Holton that is turning in his retirement, Mr. Gunnerson, who, you know, from the day that I walked into that building, you know, was just there with a smile, and greeted, and, you know, knew your name, and was always talking to you, and, you know, he's there and takes such pride in his work, and it's just neat to see, you know, someone that, at, it doesn't matter what level you're at within this district, the pride and the joy that people have in just being around the kids, and, and, you know, doing the job the best that they can do, so, best wishes to Mr. Gunnerson, and, you know, very happy for him, and, you know, wish him the best.
Well, Bruce, you're out of order, but I, I allowed it because, you know, you're giving recognition to someone, we just, because I think you're jumping the gun, Andrea's got some comments, too, so, with, with that, vote on the consent items, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the consent items pass.
Mr. President?
Yes, Andrea.
If I may, I'd like to speak a little bit on some of the retirements that you just have acted upon. I'll focus first on the teachers, we have three teachers, Cynthia Viskasil, who's a teacher, LD teacher at North Hudson, 25 years in the district, Kathy Zul, a third-grade teacher at Rivercrest, 32 years in the district, and Patty Thorson, a business ed teacher at the high school, who's been here 25 years. So of those three teachers, it's 82 years in the district. In addition, the support staff retirements, I think, were quite significant as well. I don't think it's this common that we have this many years of service between the two. So we have Blair Gunnerson, who's the head custodian at Holton, 35 years in the district, Julie Everson, the health assistant at Holton, 24 years, Cynthia St. Ores, ASC Administrative Assistant, 20 years, and Beth Swanson, also ASC Administrative Assistant, another 20 years. So of those four, it's 99 years of service in the district, I just thought that was pretty incredible.
Very good, well, and thank you to all those who are turning in their well-deserved retirements, hope they enjoy that retirement, but 35 years for Mr. Gunnerson, that's, that's my high school reunion coming up, is my 35th this year, so.
Mr. President?
It's a while ago, yes.
I did see Mr. Gunnerson this morning, and he mentioned to me that he was already considering coming back to substitute, because he knows he'll miss the kids so much, and he was actually pretty teary today, so it was, it was pretty emotional.
That's great. All right, unless there's other comments then on the retirements, moving along to committee reports, and Lynn, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll be brief, there were three topics on the agenda for the Finance Committee, January 5th. There were two topics that weren't covered in this meeting previously, the first one was related to the information regarding salaries and the salary structure for the superintendent, as we embark on the superintendent's search, and Andrea will be coming back to the committee with information regarding competitive salaries to help with that search, and to help our consultants. The other item was related to the impact of the Affordable Care Act on the district. Mark from our Financial Services Department presented information to the committee on the, on the Affordable Care Act, and how it impacts the district, and while the district will be monitoring and watching for any changes in the law, we are preparing for implementation on July 1st of 2015, and there will be more information coming back to the committee and the board regarding that. So ends my report.
Very good. All right, any comments or questions for Lynn? Then I'll move along to the next committees. Learning Program Development is actually Brian's committee, he chairs that, but because of his work commitments, I substituted for him. And, you're welcome. And, the, we talked about the board policy with the student awards and scholarships, which we've covered, and the board, implementation of the board procedures, I guess that was covering Learning Program Development. Then, any questions about Learning Program Development on that lengthy report? Okay. Then, in Facilities and Grounds, we covered the open enrollment space recommendations, and we did that, we acted on that already tonight, same thing with secondary space for learning, the short-term plan, we were informed of. In addition to that, we had items regarding a short-term plan for emergency lighting at facilities, it was determined that when that latest power outage happened during the choir concert, that we, we need some power packs for when electricity goes out, and so we are going to be correcting that in the short term. And then, we also discussed a long-term plan for getting generator backup at some of our facilities. Obviously, we have some more modern facilities that don't need much, if anything, for additional emergency lighting or generator backup, and then we have some facilities that need it more. Leave it at that, right? Okay, is there any questions on that? Hearing none, then we'll move to personnel, and because of Tom's absence, this is his committee to chair, I substituted and chaired for him. I told you I had a busy week last week, so.
Most valuable board member.
I'm not, yeah, that, and a cup of coffee, well, and, so the agenda, an impact of the Affordable Care Act, I think, Lynn, you explained it very well, it is something that the district feels like we're on top of, and we don't need to repeat that part. The additional School Resource Officer was discussed in detail, and we've approved that tonight, and then we did make the clarification on the administrator contracts regarding drafting new two-year contracts, as well as talking about the language regarding probationary administrators, and moving them up to veteran administrative status with regard to the pay. And then we went into a closed session on a unanimous vote to consider compensation performance regarding specific employees. Any questions then regarding personnel? Hearing none, entertain a motion regarding closed session.
Mr. President, I move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, parent one, parent F, considering personal histories of specific student and parent which have discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of the persons.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded, requires a roll call vote, and I will note that we will adjourn from that, we will not be returning to open session. Starting with, this time with Sandy, on the roll call vote.
Gurkey, aye.
Holland, aye.
Bell, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Robson, aye.
Hanson, aye.
Whitaker, aye.
We are adjourned to closed session, thank you.